Limocation tonight, Mr. Willie Hawke Sampson.
Very good. Good evening. I'm so thankful to be here in this meeting with the greatest city and people in the world. I don't know if you've been to Tupelo, but I'm a big talker, so it's proud of having you. When I was right here, we go way back. Yeah, George Gray and my sons, school kids. Lord God, it is with your blessing that we are gathered here tonight. We pray that thou will continue to watch over us and grant us all that we need. We come tonight in the ominous manner we've been taught with head bowed and hearts lifted to thee. Thank you, Nee, for all thy rich blessings. For I have you made us and you know all about us. We pray that thou will just strengthen us where we're weak and build us up where we're torn down. Give us that love that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast as your son Jesus did when he died on the cross. Lord, we just bless this meeting in a special way. For I have if your hand is on us, everything will go well. Bless the mayor of this great city and all the aldermen and all the first responders. All we do define and pray for. We never fall short to give thy name to praises. It is in the precious name of Jesus we do pray. And all the saints of God say amen.
Amen.
Ms. Gaston?
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask our vice president for the confirmation or amendment to the agenda and the agenda order.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the agenda and the agenda order with the following one addition, which is item S1, study addition, which is in the matter of ordinance to amend section 2-3 of the City of Tupelo Code of Ordinance to state, among other things, as the council may deem necessary, then a citizen shall only be allowed one request to speak concerning the same issue or a substantially similar issue within a six-month period, and to delete item eight and a matter of approval to submit 2021 hotspot policing grant.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Brown. I have a second, but Mr. Mills, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we're going to the proclamations, recognitions, and reports agenda. Proclamations. There are none. No girl or boy scouts, maybe past girl and boy scout, but none active right now. Okay. Employee recognition. Public recognition, all in trouble with Mr. Mills.
Have none. Ms. Janet?
I would just like to say that I took my grandchildren today to Fire Station Number Three, and I was so impressed, and they were so impressed. I just want to say I appreciate their openness and everything they do.
Very good. Ms. Rosie? Lynn?
I don't have any.
Ms. Nettie?
I have two things I want to mention I would like for us to put on our calendars, June 18th, the Juneteenth Festival. That's a big celebration nationally. And we will be having a celebration at Gumtree Park on June the 18th. And we'd like for you to come because this is a very important day when the slaves were freed completely. And we'd like to do a big celebration, and you come help during us for that celebration. And then I got the opportunity to attend the Mississippi Economic Council meeting today, and it was just an excellent meeting. And I got a chance, although I'm not young, I like to be around young entrepreneurs and those who have a lot of great ideas. And they had several young people there who went through some training, and I had a workshop today in with the event that they had earlier. And I met one of my new clients, new persons that live in Ward Four. She lives in the new building where the children's clinic is. And she talked several for us and talked to us about some of her concerns. So I'm just happy to see her here today, and she will be getting on the agenda to speak on a concern that she has later in the meeting. But yeah, I'd like to just recognize her. Sarah Barrett.
Thank you, Ms. Nettie. At this time, we'll introduce our mayor for his remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say to the Gumtree committee that they had a great Gumtree Festival this year. They did a little something different with the wild arts, and I thought all three days were very well attended, and they did a great job. Had a lot of people downtown Indiana. I want to bring up someone to introduce, use them, this chef Cooper Miller. Chef Miller works at Port Fluff Restaurant, and he was just crowned the king of Mississippi seafood. So I kind of asked him to come and share what he won that recipe with and kind of tell a little bit about himself.
Thank you. First off, let me say thank you for inviting me, Mr. Mayor. Absolute pleasure to be here. Secondly, it was an honor to represent this town. I went down there with the intention of winning, and we did. It was four competitors. Most of them were from the Gulf, and it was a heated little competition out on the beach, really nice weather, a lot of fun. But in the end, we ended up winning it. And a dish that won was inspired by flavors of Mexico, kind of fish taco. We took Gulf snapper and crusted it with potato and chorizo, and then we served it on a puree of fresh corn, which we whipped up with some corn chips that kind of tasted like a tortilla, jalapeno sauce, and an heirloom tomato pico de gallo on top. But in the end, they just said that everything on my plate was executed perfectly, and that's why we ended up getting the win. So going on to Nationals, August 6th in New Orleans. Think that'll be televised on PBS if I'm correct. So yeah, just looking forward to going down there. If we mess around and win, Mississippi will be the winningest state at the National Seafood Club if we win this one. So wish us luck.
Very good.
I know we've had several awards through our restaurants and food in the past, and thankful we still have another chef that won an award. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. We'll now go to public agenda, beginning with public hearings. Item number one, in the matter of public hearings for lotmowings. Do we have anyone to speak to that? We'll go to two, in the matter of public hearings for demolitions. Do we have anyone to speak to that? Well, number three, in the matter of public hearings for rezoning. Do we have anyone to speak to that? Okay. We'll now go, we have no appeals. We'll go to the citizens' hearing. I think we have Mr. Burns. Is Mr. Burns here today? Mr. Burns, I'll ask you for your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
All right. Scott Burns, 912 West Jackson Street. And the reason I came today is I kind of want to give everybody an update about Seven Days for the Troops. I'm hoping most everybody here has heard about it. But Seven Days for the Troops is an event that I started 16 years ago because I was, I'm a Marine Corps veteran and got injured when I was in the Marines in 91. Got out in 95 and was sitting at home, I don't know, 16 years ago, and was kind of beating myself up because I couldn't be in the military anymore, and I wanted to do something. So I decided I was going to do a fundraiser, built a tower out at the mall at Barnes Crossing, and camped out on top of it for seven days. And we raised money that year to buy calling cards to send overseas. What was going to be a one-time event as of this year is now it's on 501(c)(3). We've done the event in North Carolina, Texas, Tampa, Florida, and this year we're doing Statesville, North Carolina, Denver, Colorado, Diamond Head, Mississippi, Tupelo's event. And our mission this, this main mission for this year is to raise money to buy really cool all-train track wheelchairs for veterans. And as of right now, I'm astonished to be able to say that we have, just from sponsors in Tupelo, businesses in Tupelo that have supported us for years but have come on board this year, we are only $2,000 away from being able to purchase our first of two wheelchairs that we need for veterans in this area. Chairs are $16,000 apiece, and like I said, we've already gotten $14,000 for the first chair. It's going to be for a 74-year-old Air Force veteran. And just kind of wanted to tell people that, you know, we're going to be here, and this event, I believe, has brought a lot of attention to Tupelo because we've been able to talk about Tupelo and all these locations that we've done the event in.
Thank you very much.
The event here will be June the 22nd through July, or June 22nd through July 2nd, and we'll actually do that inside the Food Corps of the Mall. We do it a little bit different, but I literally build a stage and camp out in the Food Corps of the Mall for seven days. And the other events I do outside on a tower that's about 15 feet in the air and camp out in the air for seven days.
Is it there, you take your donations?
Yes, ma'am. We take donations at the mall, or you can go to the website, which is sevendaysforthe, the number seven, daysforthethetrupes.org, and you can make a donation there. And I will say this, we, the event is covered by sponsors, so 100% of every dollar donated goes to help veterans. There's nobody on our staff that gets paid. Everything's done volunteer. Our travel expenses, when we go out of town, not only do we help veterans in those areas, but we get to keep 15% of everything we raise in other states and other towns that we bring back to Tupelo to help veterans in this area.
You have a phone number?
And I brought business cards for y'all if y'all would like one, so you'll have all this information.
So would you consider a councilperson being up there in the air with you?
I would, in a heartbeat.
No, I'm thinking, you're just checking.
In a heartbeat. And make it more, matter of fact, I will say that I don't like calling them politicians. I don't like politicians, so I'm not going to use the word politician. But the Democrat, Republican, independents have supported this event. When it comes to helping our veterans, we may be on the different side of the field on some things, but everybody in this town has been real supportive of what we're doing and helping the veterans in our town.
Very good call. We appreciate that, Mr. Burns. Thank you very much. At this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow this nice young lady that we met today at the EOM meeting to speak.
I'd like to suspend the rule to allow Ms. Sarah Barrett to come over and speak.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Ms. Sarah? May we pull the mic? You have a name, address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Sarah Barrett. 199 Grand Stand Place, Apartment 213, Tupelo, Mississippi, 3804. Raise your hand if you know who Elvis Presley is. And that Tupelo is obviously the birthplace of Elvis. And did you know that there's a movie coming out soon? Some of you do, some of you may not. My biggest issue is that there's not enough social media coverage of certain events, especially with the new movie coming out with different businesses and organizations. There's not enough coverage on our bigger businesses and organizations such as MyTupelo or the Downtown Main Street Association. Unfortunately, I got in the midst of this probably about two weeks ago when everyone kept asking me, there's a Gumtree Festival? When does that go to be happening? And I know the mayor mentioned Gumtree Festival, and I was one of the social media managers for that. And I don't know if y'all noticed or not, but it started blowing up within like the 10 days prior to the event. Unfortunately, there have been some organizations that haven't been publicizing the MyTupelo spirit that I think that they should, and I know other members of the community have voiced their opinions about this as well. If we are to grow Tupelo and grow Mississippi and attract more people and maintain youth and other members of the community in Tupelo, we need to make sure that they know that there are certain events happening. They need to know that whether it's family events, things that are happening musically within the arts, that these things are happening, and unfortunately, they aren't being publicized as much. I am a social media manager and graphic designer for a couple of different local businesses. And for Gumtree, we posted, I have the number right here. For Gumtree, we posted 44 posts within about 10 days. For Yobos, which is another account that I manage, 53 posts since January. However, MyTupelo posted 24 posts since January. This makes it look like nothing's happening in Tupelo. For Downtown Tupelo, which Gumtree was obviously downtown in Tupelo, they've only posted 14 posts since January. These numbers are staggering when you see that in 10 days, we posted 44 posts for Gumtree. And this was a two-person team that posted these things, whereas obviously MyTupelo and Downtown Tupelo have a much bigger reach and audience. And one of my biggest concerns was it's not even about the content creation that they have to do. It's about sharing the information that people like me and other businesses are tagging them in. For MyTupelo, they posted about three posts prior to the event. Then they reposted only in one day, maybe about five posts, and then they posted one feed post, which is the one that's supposed to get the majority of impressions. They only posted one thing, and that was after the event. During the MEC meeting that we had this morning, someone said that, well, she's from San Diego. She moved here for a Toyota position. She said the only way that she, that people around here can get information about these events, that obviously we want them to stay for these events and for education and everything, is if they already have been living here since they were young or if they know someone. And a lot of times when people are implanted from other states, they don't know anyone. And resources like MyTupelo and Downtown Tupelo are the main resources for this. So hopefully, we can broaden our reach with social media and marketing to where more people can know that some things are happening, like Earth, Wind, and Fire, which was like two weeks ago, which was awesome. But anyway, that's pretty much it. I appreciate you all for suspending part of the agenda for me to speak, and I have enjoyed getting to know some of the members on the council today.
We thank you very much. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it. We'll now close the public agenda and open the regular session. We have nothing on the action agenda. We'll start with a routine agenda with item five in the matter of minutes of May 3rd, 2022 council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Travis Beard. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number six, in the matter of bill pay.
Move that we would pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie, a second by Ms. Rosie. Tonight, we had Mr. Beard, Ms. Davis, Ms. Gaston, and myself, and we had Under the Watchful Eye Jennifer Schimper and Johnny Timmons. We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. In the matter of advertising and promotional items.
A move that we would approve the listed advertising and promotion items.
Second.
We have a motion by Nettie Davis, a second by Ms. Rosie. The items that we're talking about would be the Mississippi Radio Group, $299 for Memorial Day ads, various vendors TBD, $1,000 for the Juneteenth Celebration at Gumtree Park, and we also have one for $259, $59.92 for Winfield Neighborhood Event. We have a motion and a second, all in favor of these expenditures? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll go now to, in the matter of, in the matter of approval to submit 20, I'm sorry, number eight has been delayed. We'll go to nine, in the matter of lotmowing.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Brown. We have a second by Ms. Janet. Ms. Rosie? Ms. Janet? Who, second? Okay. I'm sorry. So we have a motion, second, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number 10, in the matter of review slash approve properties for demolition.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynn Brown. I have a second by Chad Mills. Mr. Tanner Newman, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. President, tonight, the Department of Development Services requests permission to adjudicate a house located at Quarter 826 Hodges Lane. It is abandoned, bound to be structurally unstable, and was the location of a recent homicide back in April. So we request the council approve adjudication to demolish that house and get that site cleaned up. Also request adjudication at 808 Allen Street, 810 Allen Street. These demolitions will not be of houses on the property, but for accessory structures located on the properties. On 808 Allen, there's a burnt building, visible on North Gloucester Street. We'd like to get taken down, cleaned up. And then also, 810 Allen, there is another accessory structure. The roof has collapsed. So we request permission to adjudicate those properties and get those cleaned up.
We have any discussion or questions for Mr. Newman? All in favor? That's unanimous. Item number 11, in the matter of review slash accept planning committee minutes.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Second.
Chad Mills made the motion, and Ms. Janet Gaston had the second. Mr. Tanner?
Yes, Mr. President. For you are the minutes from the May 2nd, 2022 Planning Committee Minutes, excuse me, meeting. At this meeting, the planning committee approved an application from Hodges Store to renovate their headquarters located here in Downtown Tupelo. This renovation will include the demolition of the old brick building here on East Main, with the addition to their, to the rest of their headquarters building located in that same parcel. And the renovations will include paving of the parking lot on East Main along with bringing their landscaping up to current commercial standards. The committee also tabled an application from Flowerdale Commons for their major site plan of a 46-unit apartment complex off Colonial State Road. This application was tabled pending a traffic study by the developer, redesign of their current plans to meet building lint requirements, and a water management plan to address flooding concerns.
Any questions for Mr. Newman?
I have a comment. I'm just happy to know that Dodgers is getting ready to do some remodeling and upgrading of their properties. That's one of the older buildings downtown, and we're just really excited to see them get ready to expand and do some renovation and upgrading.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of this motion? That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll go to item number 12, in the matter of review slash accept license committee minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gaston. We have a second by Mr. Mills. Tanner?
Yes, Mr. President. The council should have a copy of the minutes and a copy of the packet from the License Commission meeting on April 14th, 2022. This meeting, the License Commission upheld the city's condemnation order of the building located 308 near Spring Street. They also considered a request from the Mississippi Home Garden Association to update the city's electrical code to allow the usage of a number of 14-gauge wire for lighting circuits and switch legs. A motion was made to approve the request. However, there was no second, so the motion died on the floor, and no further action was taken by the commission regarding that item.
Any comments, questions?
I'm just happy to see, although this is related to lighting, as far as the electrical part is concerned, this is an area that has been a little blighted and it's being upgraded. So I'm just happy to see that area move forward with some new things going on in that area, 308 and South Spring Street.
Thank you, Ms. Nettie. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? That's unanimous. Item number 13, in the matter of review slash approve amended development agreement for Butler Park Phase One.
Make a motion to table this item.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Brown to table, a second by Ms. Janet Gaston. There will be, pardon? One of y'all is ventriloquist or something. I can't keep, all right, Ms. John, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of this motion? This item will be laid on the table. We'll now go to item number 14, in the matter of review slash approve rezoning 22-02.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Brown. We have a second by Ms. Rosie. There's no discussion. All in favor of this motion to table this item? That is unanimous. We'll go to item 15, in the matter of review slash approve major site plan for Butler Park Phase Two.
Make a motion to table it.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynn Brown. We have a second by Ms. Nettie. There's no discussion. All in favor of this motion? That is unanimous. Thank you, Tanner. We'll go to item 16, in the matter of ratification of contract for bid number 2022-009 PW Airport Road Scrub Seal.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Janet Gaston. Dennis?
Yes, sir. This was a, this was approved for award at the April 19th council meeting, but the Senate's got the documents out for signature of all parties, presenting that team not to be ratified before it is worked out.
Any questions for Dennis? We have a motion, a second, all in favor? That's unanimous. Item number 17, in the matter of award of bid number 2022-019 PD.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Brown, a second by Travis Beard. Chief?
I'm asking for your permission to purchase five police package stahls for the Tupelo Police Department. The cost of each one is $46,886. This is, this is above what we normally pay. However, we're getting them loaded with all the accessories. Normally, we pay about $38,000, $39,000, and then we put all the equipment in it later. This is all coming ready to roll when we, when they get here.
Any questions?
And this is in your budget?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, this is the budget of that. I always forget to say that. I'm sorry.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Thank you.
That's unanimous. Item number 18, in the matter of approval of contract for the Aquatic Center for live feed for swim mates software.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mills, second by Janet Gaston. Alex?
Yeah, this is going to be another really nice addition that we can provide from the Aquatic Center that people will be able to, will be able to kind of log in and pay a fee to log in to watch these swim events, even actually from their house. And I'm And as we were talking in the work session yesterday, I made sure with Stephen that the city does get thirty percent back from those who live on annual, on a annual deal at the end. So there is gonna be some money that will come back to the city for this, for this service. But I think it's gonna be a really, a really big thing to do.
Any questions, comments?
Um, so, I can't remember. So yesterday you said that in order to watch it, you'll have to log into it, so it won't be part of like a cable thing.
Oh, they said, yeah, I think you're gonna have to, well, I think we provide that information out there with these events, and then those, other spectators and other people will be able to log in some way with a code or something of that nature.
So just in letting people know in the city that we have this available, how would they know if?
I think we're gonna, it's gonna, I think that's gonna be kind of experimental, but I think we're gonna be able to pump that out through, you know, through Facebook, through, because it'll be a brand new service that we'll, that we'll be able to offer. I mean, that's something we can go out in our splash brochure, you know, in the years. So hopefully, if we keep doing this annually and it works out well, we'll, we'll definitely figure out how, how to get that out to folks.
Yes, because we want to keep people here.
They could put it on the meet invitations search for out too. We did it to all the different teams that come to Tupelo.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number nineteen, in the matter of approval of TPRD Advisory Board Minutes for February and March twenty-twenty-two.
Some move. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gaston, we have a second by Ms. Jones. Alex?
These were really routine minutes. This was our last meeting, kind of wrapping up the spring. We'll meet again, or we won't meet again until August.
Any other comments? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, Alex. Item number twenty, in the matter of CVB Minutes of May third, twenty-twenty-two.
A move that we would approve the convention of bill, bureau minutes for May third, two-thousand twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie, we have a second by Mr. Lynn Brown. All in favor? That's unanimous. Item twenty-one, in the matter of approval of Bancorp South Arena Minutes of March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Need as we approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Mr. Lynn Brown. All in favor? That is unanimous. Item number twenty-two, in the matter of award, in the matter of award of bid number twenty-twenty-two dash zero one eight WL.
Some move? Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, we have a second by Chad Mims. The respected Johnny Timmons.
The bid before you is a six-month bid for LED lighting. As the LED light, as you know, is what we were upgrading in the city of Tupelo. The bidder, which was the low bidder, with all phase electric supply, the problem with that bid is that he does not need the requirement for our rooms to live light. So I would recommend to you for item number one, Curiously Irving, items two, three, and four to be awarded to Arkansas Electric.
Any comments, questions?
At the same place?
Ma'am.
Will it be at the same place?
All in favor of the, that's unanimous. Thank you. In the matter of request for approval of surplus items.
A move that we would approve the surplus item list.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie, a second by Mr. Beard. Johnny T?
Yes, this is an accumulation of a lot of printers, old computers, stuff that's obsolete. So I request you to sort of surplus it, and we will destroy it if needed.
Any comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Johnny. Item twenty-four, in the matter of ratification of statewide mutual aid compact agreement.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Mr. Lynn Brown. Mr. Logan?
Yes, Stephen, he is attending a child's kindergarten graduation this morning, so I told him he needed to go to that. So we'll have these every first and third Tuesday. The, uh, the mutual aid compact is a statewide program where the fire departments, police departments, public works, fire departments in different cities that are under emergency, they can, uh, we can send folks to help them out along with equipment during those times of emergency, and also they can send us if we are in an emergency. It's a recurring type thing. They have an inventory of all the different types of equipment across the state, including ours, and Fire Chief can tell us more about, tell everybody more about that than I can. But it's a good program, and it's something we've been involved in for a long time now.
Any questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number twenty-five, in the matter of ordinance to amend section two dash two sixty-six of the City of Tupelo Code of ordinances to state that regular meetings of the citizens' police advisory board shall be every other month.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beard, a second by Ms. Davis. Ben?
Uh, yes, President Palmer, I believe that the, uh, the police advisory board has requested, and the police department has also recommended that the police advisory board meet on it a every other month basis as opposed to a monthly basis. Chief Quokka, you may can fill us in more if the council would like.
A couple of months ago, I suggested to the police advisory board that they consider meeting every month as opposed to every month. They voted on it. They voted eight to one to meet every other month. What I want you to know is this is not going to squash any transparency at all. I thought this was more of an effective way to communicate our message to them. A lot of them, it was hard for them to make everyone, so I felt like if we met every other month, that they would be more involved and engaged. They have asked that we continue to send them our monthly reports. We absolutely will do that. We will continue that. So I'm hoping this will just kind of rebrand the police advisory board and maybe make it a little bit stronger.
I get you. As the next official member of that board, Travis and Nettie and several others, we think that's probably, we think it's definitely a good idea. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? That's unanimous. Before we close the regular session, we have a young man that needs to be introduced sitting right in there on that second row. If you don't mind standing up, young man, Mr. Lynn Brown will take charge.
This is Marcus Minka from Troop Eighty-Five Boy Scout, and to get his communications very bad, he has to come to a public hearing or a city council meeting. So he just sat through it, and he'll have to go back and discuss it.
Now, you, you just have to sit through it. You don't necessarily have to like it. So let's give him a big round of. We thank you so much for being here. Will at this time close the regular session?
President Palmer?
Yes.
May I address something just?
Absolutely.
Uh, I would like to address something that Ms. Sarah Barrett had mentioned earlier. I've been in communication with Gumtree Director Kit Stafford, and she said that she feels like they were very supported with the Gumtree, and Ms. Barrett is using the Gumtree festival name here that she was hired to do a complaint, and Kit said if there was a complaint done, it should have come from them. CVB, which is run by My Tupelo, was a major sponsor in the Gumtree event, and even though I appreciate your concern, I just wanted to make sure the council knows that the Gumtree Commission did not approve her coming in and speaking against the organization.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor. At this time, we will go to the study agenda with item number S one, in the matter of an ordinance to amend section two dash thirty of the City of Tupelo Code of ordinances to state, among other things, as the council may deem necessary, that a citizen shall only be allowed one request to speak concerning the same issue or substantially similar issue within any six-month period.
Move it up.
Move it up? Okay, that, that item will be moved up. I now would ask for a motion to determine the need for executive session.
Make a motion to determine the need for executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Logan?
Yes, President Palmer, we have, uh, Ms. Council Clerk, Ms. Shelton, did you get that packet from Stephen on the two of the properties?
We have two properties tonight that we have talked about before in executive session. We wanted to always bring it before you before we take the next step, which is to enter into a contract for purchase and get that approval from you. We have two purchases that we're looking at, one sale tonight and one exercise of an option in the eye of the mayor and the city clerk to go ahead and do that. We've got those documents here for you tonight. When we break and shut down the camera here in a sec, we'll get those other two properties up here.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? I now would need a motion to go into executive session.
A move that we would go into executive session.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie, we have a second by Chad. All in favor? We appreciate y'all coming out, and we're now in executive session.